Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Monday, August 16th, 2021. It's 5:00 PM. Thank you all for being here. We have one consent agenda item, and then we'll have an executive session to discuss our yearly performance evaluation of our city attorney. We do it every year, and we'll be looking at city administrator coming up. So let's turn the floor over to Jeff Rider, our Director of Economic Development for Consent Agenda Item E. Jeff, thank you for being here. You have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. Thanks for your time this evening. I'm going to go over Consent Item E with you this evening and talk about a request the staff has for an approval of a resolution for the disposi-- excuse me, the disposition of the community center in Sunny Crest Park. Over the last few years, we've seen a lot of positive growth and development in downtown. And as you all know, we set a goal this year of community center disposition and redevelopment. It's one of our highest priorities. So to help with that, we would like to request, as a staff, an approval resolution to issue an RFP to the public to see what sort of opportunities we may get as part of that goal. I'm just going to go over some of the high-level points within the RFP, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those. First off, all proposals should further those goals and objectives that we have set forth in the downtown master plan overlay. It is our goal and intent to have this become a high-quality, commercial development that continues to bring people to downtown Bettendorf to live, work, and play. So we've set the RFP with a submittal due date of October 22nd of this year. It's our goal to give folks enough time to put some plans on paper and provide a nice proposal back to us for consideration. We do believe there is a strong market for this property, and we should see some nice presentations back to us. And all of those presentations could come in many different forms. The RFP will be posted on the city's website. It'll be posted on social media, and we will reach out to all of our local developers and our friends at the Chamber and others in the area to help us market this opportunity to get it out there as much as we possibly can. As I've mentioned, we're seeking redevelopment proposals for the location of the Herb Getch Community Center in Sunny Crest Park, located just to the east of us here. And we would assume that the redevelopment would consider some sort of commercial, market-rate, multi-residential, restaurant and/or retail development spaces. We wanted to continue to serve as a catalyst for downtown and drive additional growth, additional density, and additional investment in our downtown corridor. We're seeking a qualified bidder to prepare a development and implementation plan for the property that's approximately 4.48 acres in total. We do have a legal description, an aerial, and some survey work that we're including in the RFP that I make prepared for us as well. One item of note that we have put in here as well, this is not currently in an urban renewal area, and the City of Bettendorf does reserve the right to accept or decline any and all proposals. So even after this comes in, we have the opening. We can choose whatever proposal we like or do not like. We can continue to market it at that point, or we can choose a bidder or none at all. We'll require all standards of the downtown master plan overlay district to be met. The project should be aesthetically pleasing and provide those complementary business types that we would like to see in downtown Bettendorf. Just a couple items that we are asking the developer to do in their proposal. We would like to dispose of the property. We do not have any interest in leasing the property in any way, shape, or form. And we hope that the proposal will come in offering us an opportunity to either sell or have a development agreement with a proposed winner of this bid that is complementary and mutually beneficial. So we're asking them to tell us how they plan to acquire the property from us. Would it be just a cash transaction, or would it be through a development agreement of some sort? We would intend on seeing that in their proposal. The property could see the demolition of the existing community center, or it could see the repurposing of that property as well. As a staff, we've remained open-minded to those opportunities, too. So we're going to anticipate developers providing us a number of different opportunities there. The bidder's response to the RFP should include a full proposal, including a concept plan, the new intended use, and a proposal for how the developer wishes to acquire that property from the city, along with a timeline, a construction commencement schedule, and an anticipated opening date for the new development. Again, as I had stated in the previous notes, only real projects will be considered. Sometimes we've seen developers ask us if they could acquire the property from us and use it as a marketing tool to lure a master developer of some sort. We would like to see a development opportunity here that's a real project that moves us forward here in short order. We'd ask the project team to be identified in the bid package as well, so we know who will be working on the project. We ask for a narrative fully describing the qualitative and quantitative aspects of the project. We're going to ask for at least one successfully completed project by the development team. And we're going to ask for any partners and references that are going to be a part of this project as well, or that can be referenced in case we have questions. There should also be consideration for the placement of two existing tenants who currently reside in the community center building as well. So we're going to ask for the bids to consider that as part of their responses, as part of this as well. The anticipated new assessed value of the property in the development should be considered as part of the package, too, so we know what sort of new taxable valuation we should expect. And again, at a minimum, the proposal should include a concept plan for the entire site. And the concept plan should include some level of conceptual or architectural drawings depicting the finished product. And one thing that's very important to us as well, it's great to see nice pictures, but we certainly want to know that the project has necessary financing to carry itself out. So we're going to ask that that be a part of this development package as well. And if the necessary financing is not in place, those projects would be disqualified from the process. As previously mentioned, we've provided a legal description and exhibit for reference. I anticipate that we'll be walking through prospective bidders over the next six to eight weeks, so they can see the property, and we'll answer any further questions they have, which would all be a matter of public record. And then just in closing really quick, all bidders would be required to go through the necessary site planning and zoning processes. We do not anticipate on moving anything forward at an expeditious manner. We want everything to be done according to our codes and through our site planning and approval processes. We would anticipate the final approval of the transfer of property to somewhat come in under the gun here, and we would expect that date to be no later than the end of the year 2021. So I would anticipate Councilor Kern, myself, the staff, we would all work with this individual or this development team, and hopefully have the transfer of the property by the end of this calendar year. That would be our goal. And once again, Your Honor, staff is at this time requesting a resolution to issue the RFP, and at that point, we'll go through all the process steps to make sure that we go through the necessary approvals. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Bill, go ahead on the RFP.
What was the thought process on restricting us to local developers only?
We wanted to make sure that we could understand their track record, their history, and try to find someone in the area that's local. To be perfectly honest, I think that buying local, using local, being local right now is a big initiative in the Quad Cities region, and if we can do so, we'd like to maintain a local flavor if we could. If we find Mr. Connors that we do not get necessary bids or approvals or good bids from local developers, we could then extend it to the region or the nation if we'd like to.
Realistically, how many proposals would you expect to get from local developers?
I would anticipate we will see somewhere between four to six would be my guess. And some of those may be as much as just, I'd like to buy it, and I'd like to put an apartment building here. Others may come into play and say, I'd like to further look at the landscape and do some parcel assemblage and make it a bigger development. I would also anticipate we may get a couple of folks that come in and just say, I want to buy the building, and I want to turn it into a new gymnasium and just repurpose the space. I think it's going to be a large array, and I would, like I said, I would guess probably four to six.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, Greg.
Just a comment. My-- when I read your packet, the repurposing of the building doesn't really do-- doesn't really make me happy. So I would hope that we're-- we would lean more towards somebody coming in and doing something else. Might be a great-- might be a great project to repurpose, but I-- that's just my feeling on it.
Yeah, I tend to agree with you, Councilmember Adamson. Actually, I really agree with you. I would love to see this be a higher, better use, higher, better value to create more density, more property value, regentrify the area. But I think we wanted to keep an open mind.
Sure.
And, you know, give everyone the opportunity to bid on an equal playing field.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Nauman, then Scott Webster.
Thank you, Your Honor. In your opinion, Jeff, do you feel that this process of the RFP accomplishes a couple of things? Like you said, maximize the return on the opportunity and perhaps pushes the timeline as opposed to just listing the property and going through the process? I mean, I'm sure you've done a lot of homework with Realtors, looked at the marketplace and so forth. So this process, if you could just speak to why this is recommended and--
Sure. Well, I think as a public institution, a public facility, I think it's best to go through a bid process and see what the public has to offer, if you will. I think it's important for us to do that as a policy and process step. I think that if we were to, say, list it with a real estate agent, we would probably get a sell in pretty quick order. But this gives us the opportunity to vet further as a group, as a staff, and as a council on all of the positives that we would like to see. And through this RFP process, you have the ability to negotiate. So by not necessarily taking a bid at first blush, you have the opportunity to work with a developer to get mutually beneficial outcomes met. A sale is a sale, and at the end of that, you transact the building, and then you're done. So I think through an RFP process, it gives us the opportunity to get the best outcome for downtown and for the developer.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes, Scott Webster.
I consider to be a little still stuck on the consideration for placement of two existing tenants. I don't-- and I realize that there are community services that are in there, and we got to figure out a place to put them. My concern is putting it in a contract where we would maybe throw out a project that doesn't consider them because they can't. And maybe it's something that the city needs to look at, helping find a location for those. Is that the way that you're reading this? That if that consideration isn't in there, that they didn't qualify as an RFP? I know these things kind of get-- if you don't hit the bullet points, sometimes you get rejected because you don't, so--
It's a good question. Mr. Plain and Mr. Kern and myself actually deliberate on that quite a bit. I believe, kind of to follow up on what I just mentioned, the Councilmember Nauman, this gives us the opportunity to negotiate, and if a developer comes in and says, I can do hypothetically a $30 million complex for you, and it's going to be beautiful, but I'm really having a hard time finding a spot for these two users. We then know what we're working with, and our end goal is to obviously get a beautiful $30 million development there. Wouldn't that be great? But then we know that this is their stumbling block, and if that, at that time, is an issue for us, we have the ability to work through it. So we worked on language in here that says consideration, not a requirement. So hopefully, if a developer has a question about that, they will contact us, so we can talk that through a little bit further with them. I think at the end of the day, if someone wanted to come in and provide this as, we're going to regentrify this into a gymnasium, and I'm kicking them out, we would know at that point that that's not everybody's best interest. But if there's a higher and better use, we can work through consideration versus requirement.
Okay. And that's the big thing. I mean, as long as we got it on the-- I mean, we somewhat have it on the record now, that if somebody can't fit that, it's a piece that we probably can figure out a way to work through.
I think we can. I think we can. So, yeah.
I don't want to see developers walk away from it because they don't have that opportunity. At the same time, I don't want to see something thrown out that because they didn't have it.
If a developer is strong, I don't think a developer is going to look at it and say, well, I just can't do this, so I'm going to throw it in the trash. I think they're going to call and inquire more about it, at which time we can work with them, as opposed to them just throwing it in the garbage and not responding. I think if consideration is the language, I think they're comfortable. And again, if they're strong, they're going to make a call.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Plain.
Well, no, I would just kind of reiterate that, that we spent a lot of time talking about that issue and said, you know, let's leave it as consideration, not a requirement, and let's see what it pulls out. And then, to Jeff's point, we would likely negotiate how that would occur. Not everyone might have the same opportunity, to the point you make, Scott. By the same token, somebody might offer us a whole lot of money that if the money's right, we can find the location with the money. Or, you know, so we're keeping our eyes and ears open, and let's see what the development brings. And if it's a wow development, like we think it might be, it probably takes care of itself.
And one item of note on there as well, the media has already inquired about this since it hit the council packet. I've had three calls today. So I'll do my best, whenever I talk to the media, to state that point in there that, you know what, this is a consideration, so they know. And hopefully, that message then gets broadcast even further.
Jerry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got two questions. The first question is, when they come in with the proposals, it's an RFP, so we can negotiate. We can negotiate with multiple bidders, if I'm correct, right?
We have that ability.
We don't have to take one bidder and then negotiate with him. We could actually go back to two bidders and say, well, you know, we don't like this and we don't like that, to the two bidders, and see if they can both come in with a better proposal.
We do have that ability with it, you know, with the urban renewal law not being governing this area, it gives us a little bit of more flexibility. The one thing I would be sensitive to is a little bit of professional courtesy.
Yes.
I don't want to, say, have two or three bidders, and we just start to play them against each other for the sake of getting an extra $5,000 hypothetically. I think we have to be a little bit respectful, and maybe negotiation is not quite the right word, but maybe it's more collaboration. We can work with them to try to get the highest and best outcome. Money will be a consideration, certainly, but I certainly want to respect their work on this as well and not make it a tet-a-tet bidding war, if you will.
Yes, I agree with that, yes. And my second question was, with the current tenants there that we're looking for another location, we-- do we have long-term leases with them? I think our leases are--
I'm not sure, though, Mr. Plain.
No, we don't. We don't.
We don't.
Thank you.
Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. Decker, I think in the past, and I may be wrong on this, I thought I had heard that we might have locations for both of these located prior to the RFP. Has that fallen through?
We have potential locations for them. We don't have anything firm because we didn't think it was appropriate for us to commit to it until we went through this process.
As part of the disposition goal, we did think it was important to start to look and see what was in the marketplace for them instead of, you know, just kicking them out and saying, we're getting rid of the property. So we have been doing some tire-kicking to find a new home for them, just as part of that goal and that process, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, yeah, Bill.
Jeff, how soon after you get the final proposals, will that-- those be distributed to council?
Immediately, if not sooner. So--
Fantastic.
We're going to have it typically like a bid opening. So whenever they come in, at that time, I believe it's 9:00 AM on October 22nd, we'll handle it probably here in the council chambers. We'll look through them all, and we'll determine those that meet the baseline criteria. If there are those that just don't meet the financing criteria, et cetera, we would probably return those. But by and large, we'll provide those to city council as soon as we have a quick review of them at the staff level. So we're not going to slow-walk this if we can move it along, for sure.
All right, thank you.
Other questions on the RFP? All right, seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion that it remain on tomorrow night's agenda is Consent Agenda Item E. So moved. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up as Consent E. Is there any remaining item on the Consent Agenda? Any particular council member would like to discuss or ask questions of at this time before we approve the entire slate? Yes, Greg.
Thank you, Your Honor. The liquor license renewals, I failed to-- when I was reading the packet, I failed to look and see what was coming up. And I'm kind of watching for a particular licensed question. Owners continuously getting-- committing law violations, as I understand it.
That one has already been renewed for this year.
For this year. Okay.
These are Central Avenue Tap, Ross's Restaurant, HP Fuels, VFW Riverside, Hy-Vee, Crawford, Baja Tacos and Shots, which is a new place.
Ooh, is that-- yeah, none of those are what I was concerned about, but thank you.
Okay. Where's the Baja? Next to--
Next to Hungry Hobo.
Yeah, the spot in the middle town there.
Bill, did you have one?
I've got one for consent, if we're there yet.
That's what we're talking about. Perfect.
This is for Director Schmidt. Are those snow guards going on the Life Fitness Center made of solid gold or platinum?
I don't know the make of the material, but they are a-- they're a mechanical fasten to the ribs of the-- to the ribs of the metal roof, and they're the bar system, and they both are going to be on the front and the back. And then what we wanted to do is, we're going to have one stacked-- we're going to have one staggered row about two to three foot off of the drip line, and then we're going to have another row six feet up. And then another safety section is just right above the entrance, as we're running another system up there. So there'll be like three bars up there on the entrance of the facility to protect the public. We had a lot of snow, obviously, last year that fell down off of that roof and created a three-to-four-foot-high snowdrift. Thankfully, nobody was, you know, walking in front of the facility, or they could have been significantly hurt. So as far as the material, I don't think that they're made of gold or platinum, but yet it is a mechanical fastener system, and this was the cheapest price that we got, and they're a local company.
Okay, well, almost $17 a linear foot, having-- that explains having multiple rows as opposed to a single row.
Right, it is a two-to-three-row system across the front.
Thank you.
Anything else on our consent agenda? Any particular council member would like to raise at this time? Okay, then I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the entire consent agenda as written for tomorrow night's consideration. So moved. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up by unanimous vote tomorrow. Any operational item that any particular council member would like to discuss at this time? We have one ordinance tomorrow. It's a second reading, so if you want to bring it up now, you could have brought it up a couple times before. We'll move past operational items. I have nothing to add. Counsel, anything to add?
Is there a date for the start of the new park commission?
We moved that two weeks, a couple things we're working on. So we will have it before you in two weeks.
Just curious. Just curious.
We had thought about getting it there today. We had a little person who we're working with.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this time then, in pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.5, one lowercase i, we'd like to go into an executive session for the purpose of evaluating the performance of our city attorney. This is a yearly event, having nothing to do with any particular issues. It's what we do every year. So at this time, I'd like our city attorney to give me the go-ahead to go into executive session.
Yes, I would request that you do that.
Thank you, sir. And at this time then, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter executive session, followed by a second and a roll call vote.
Moved.
Second.
All right. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Connors?
Yes.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Okay, we have unanimously voted to enter an executive session, and with that, I'd like to thank you all for your attendance this evening and ask that you kindly and orderly exit the council chambers. Or out, I would ask that Councilmember Nauman maybe make--
Last year.
Well, that's-- and you did so well. I always go back to--
Mayor Pro Tem, suck it up.
To direct staff to act according to our instruction.
Are you ready for that now?
Would you please?
Your Honor, thank you so much. I would make a motion that we direct staff to proceed as we advised in our executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we shall do so. I thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn our regular meeting.
So moved.
We stand adjourned. Good work, people. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. It's 7:00 PM. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Connors?
Here.
Nauman?
Here.
Sexer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Webster?
Here.
Fantastic, thank you all for being here. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation provided by Bettendorf Police Chaplain and Pastor of Bettendorf Presbyterian Church, Pastor Troy Winder. Okay, you guys ready? One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay standing for me. We're going to do an invocation, Pastor Troy.
I don't know, man. How much fun is this?
Is it fun?
This is incredible.
A little excitement tonight.
Oh, my gosh, let's pray. You've told us, oh, Holy One, what is required of us? And that is to do justice and to love-kindness and to walk humbly with you. And so, Lord, we ask, we ask for the power to do that, to do justice as individuals, as a council, as citizens, the state, and this nation, and this world, to act lovingly and to humble ourselves before you. Lord, bless us. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, you may be seated. Chief, do you want to do this now? Yeah. I should have moved this. The first thing on our agenda today is a promotion for Officer Patrick Miesit, and he will be promoted to sergeant. So Sergeant, would you please join us in the front of the room and maybe have your family come up to the side so we can get some pictures? That would be pretty cool.
I guess I have to stand in-- I'm going to have to stand in the microphone, just so I'm on mic. Good evening, everyone. My name's Keith Kimball. I'm the police chief here in Bettendorf, and tonight, I'm honored and privileged to promote one of our officers to sergeant. And it's actually, this is a great crowd. I'm glad you're going to get to witness this.
We're all here for one. Sergeant, please. Okay. Sergeant. Okay. Sergeant. Okay. 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 So Patrick, see, Patrick didn't even know this, he was going to get a crowd like this. So anyway, so if you'll just go ahead and listen, I'm going to read some stuff here because I want to make sure I get everything here for Patrick. So just want to let you know a little bit about Patrick. Patrick Miesit grew up in Bettendorf, and he graduated from Bettendorf High School. During his high school years, he actually participated heavily in our Bettendorf Police Explorer Program. After high school, he attended Iowa State University and received his bachelor's degree in criminal justice and sociology. Patrick was sworn in as a Bettendorf Police Officer in December 2012 and attended the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy. Patrick served as a patrol officer for his first few years and then was assigned as an undercover narcotics agent in January of 2015 with the Quad City Metropolitan Enforcement Group, otherwise known as QCMEG, until July of 2017. After his assignment in Quad City MEG, Patrick was assigned to the Traffic Bureau that focuses that focuses on traffic enforcement, accident investigations, and traffic safety awareness, where he has served as a traffic officer over these last few years. Other positions and responsibilities that Patrick has taken on are field training officer, being an officer in charge, accident investigator, police explorer advisor, and a member of the emergency response unit that deals with high-risk situations, along with being a police sniper. During his career, he continues to expand in his knowledge and experience as attended various specialized trainings and received certifications in the areas of interviewing, patrol tactics, accident investigations, basic SWAT school, narcotics investigations, FBI sniper observer school, and is a standard field sobriety instructor and an FAA certified drone pilot. Awards and recognitions that Patrick has received during his career, he received two commendations from the Illinois MEG Directors and Task Force Commanders Association during his service with the Quad City MEG. On October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, he received the twenty twenty Blackhawk College Hero Award. On February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, Patrick was awarded the Exceptional Service Award for his heroism and quick thinking in actions, saving a life of a three-year-old child, which occurred in September of twenty twenty. Now, a little bit on a side note, I don't know if, and Patrick may not like, let me just tell you a little bit about this, but. So after Patrick came out of MEG as a narcotics agent, as many do, you know, he was pretty excited about that. He, he actually went through the selection process for the Drug Enforcement Administration for a federal narcotics officer position. You know, he, that was a hard decision for him, he was selected, he could have left this community and gone somewhere else. But he also knew that it was an easy decision for him to stay here and it was the best decision for him because he wanted to start a family, serve the citizens of Bettendorf where his roots were, and he had a calling and he knew he could make a difference in his community. So, and also to be here with his family and have their support. So we are blessed to have, for, we are blessed and fortunate to have Patrick as a member of this department. So this past week, actually, August eighth, Sunday, Patrick was officially promoted to sergeant and started and reassigned to first shift patrol as a shift supervisor. So I would just like to please congratulate Sergeant Patrick Miesek. And for my team.
Thank you, chief, that was very nice. There's my family right there, which is what I stayed here for, it's been the best thing ever. Um, but no, I wanna thank Chief, uh, Civil Source Commission and council here for giving me the opportunity. Um, you know, the list that was made from the people that put in for this promotion. Uh, we work with some great people and I feel very lucky to be standing up here and I do not take that for granted. Um, and all my coworkers for being here today, see you guys in the back, thank you, appreciate it. I also wanna thank my parents for being here, my wife, Kelsey, my little daughter there for, for being cute and staying awake past her bedtime. Thank you, appreciate it.
In between the two sconces makes the best picture. Congratulations, gentlemen, appreciate your service, thank you. All right. We have a full house tonight. One of the great things I get to do as mayor, for eleven years I've been standing up here, is to acknowledge great accomplishments from the young people in our community. And today, we have a lot of different people to hold up here and to acknowledge their greatness in school and their greatness on athletic fields. And it's one of the things that we really like to do because we like you to see a little bit about what city council is. These are our city council people, elected by the city in different areas and a couple of them from the whole city. And they create long-term policy for what we want Bettendorf to be like when you, U-ten's and twelves graduate from high school, like some of these guys are about to do. And these are the department heads that run the various departments in the city, like Public Works and the library, Parks and Rec, where some of you may have gotta start in playing ball. So if you learn a little bit about us and see that it's not so big a deal to come down to City Hall, we'd love to have you. And we get to say congratulations to you for the great things that you've accomplished during this last period of time where you were competing, some of you a little bit ago, uh, in terms of soccer in the spring and whatnot. So first, we're gonna start with our Southeast Little League ten U team. So the ten U, can you come up and bring manager Chris Judge, coaches Greg Armstrong and Adam Flores? Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. You betcha. These are the state champions at ten and under in the state of Iowa. They hail from Eastern Davenport and Western Bettendorf. So we're gonna say congratulations to this team that won their championship game ten to zero. Is that a ten-run rule, is that still in effect? I'm an old man, sounds like they didn't get to play all the innings.
No, they didn't.
Hey, hey! Two pitchers combined for this ten-zero shutout. Keegan C., got Grandview hit to hit into a fielder's choice to finish off the game, way to go, Keegan C. Cole E. was a stud on the mound, Cole E., way to go. Four and two-thirds innings, Evan, so then you must have come in to close her down.
Yeah, almost one out of one.
Woo, all right, cuz you get a number of pitches, right?
Yes.
Uh-oh, had a Yankee cuz you had too many pitches?
That's correct.
Give it to your buddy to clean it up? Hey, hey. Congratulations to our ten U Iowa State Champions from Southeast Little League. Look at that, I'm still a little bit taller, you guys pop right down in here. We're gonna sneak together and we'll get a picture here, okay? Perfect, I got one more thing and then a coach mate has a, excuse me, sorry, a chance to talk if you guys wanna say a little something. On behalf of the City of Bettendorf, we got a little gift for you to put in the trophy case. This is, uh, presented to Southeast Little League Ten U All-Stars for the twenty twenty-one Iowa State Ten U Little League Championships. Congratulations, this from us to you, way to go champs. Go ahead, Chris.
All right, so the state was a lot of fun, being in a hotel for a week with, uh, ten-year-olds is real interesting. Out in, uh, yeah, it was a lot of fun. Um, being in Sioux City, six hours away, was unbelievable experience, especially for these guys, where the pool became more important than baseball at times. But, uh, the team we beat in the championship actually beat us in pool play and they come back and beat them in ten-run-ums, uh, was probably the most impressive thing I've seen. These are great kids, uh, expect big things from them out of the future.
You guys can have a seat, we'll let those eleven years come up. Way to go. All right, eleven years in the same uniform, another group from Southeast, huh? Tom, how long you been working with Southeast?
Eight years.
You've been ahead of it for eight years?
Eight years.
Okay. We're lucky to have with us as well, Tom Mason, who's been the head of the program for the last eight years and apparently he's doing something pretty good. Ten U's, eleven U's, twelve U's all won, the twelve U's aren't here, they're coming to the next meeting cuz they just got back from the regional finals, so, good stuff. So these are the eleven U state champions from Southeast Little League. What did I do with my, here we go. Jason Bowers, the manager, Brian Grip is the coach. And a little bit about how things came to play for you guys in the championship game. So, you guys opened your tournament play on July twentieth in Urbana with a thirteen-four win over Grandview that they beat in the finals ten-zero, so you only beat them by nine. But you were five and oh in pool play, congratulations on that. In a rematch with Grandview, you guys picked, put a bunch of runs on the board, ended up winning that game as well, eight to two as a final score. So really, probably never in doubt, huh? Gotta figure it out? Well, congratulations to the champions of the state of Iowa, eleven U's. We like our friends at Glass Blast, we keep them in business, so we got one of these for you as well. Southeast Little League, eleven U All-Stars, twenty twenty-one Iowa State Champions. Congratulations, let's take a quick. You guys, and you guys come, come in and you step in front of me, did you hear a little showing than I am? I'm gonna do it this way, how's that? Here, what are you gonna be saying?
Dark guys in front.
The windmill gets short, Craig, what's going on? Way to go, you guys.
Well, I'll keep it short, Chris said it well, it's always fun getting this, uh, each group together. I've had the opportunity to do this a few times. So I just wanna let everybody know, we are the tens, eleven, the twelves, we were the only group that went undefeated during Districts and State.
Good rivalry within the organization, Mason, good stuff. You're welcome.
Can I say something about, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, everyone.
Can I say something?
Yes, please. So, gentlemen, this is, uh, the organizer and the guy who runs your league, Mr. Mason, I know you see him all the time.
Yeah, always in the concession stand.
Yeah, always working.
Just wanna say, hey, thanks, Mr. Mayor and the city council for honoring these young, um, men here, um, ten, eleven, or sooner, you'll see our twelve U's in two weeks. But these guys represent the best of the best, thirty-four little leagues in the state of Iowa. And you got the number one teams in the ten and eleven, twelve U division. I started with this, uh, twenty fourteen, we grew from two hundred forty-two kids to four hundred and eighteen kids, from like twenty teams up to thirty-six teams. And these guys are a great bunch of kids, you're gonna look for them at Bettendorf High School, PV High School in a few years and some of them will go to ten, some Demport schools. But great kids, come from great families, good citizens, and they, they, they are the cornerstones of Little League, which is loyalty, character, and courage, these are the finest. Thank you guys for, um, recognizing that, we appreciate it.
How do you get to see what it's like when you win state titles in high school, which we're all gonna keep working for, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so let's talk to our state champion Pleasant Valley High School boy soccer team and coach Wayne Ward.
Your honor, you're gonna be in the front of all these guys. Might need a soapbox to stay.
So this is the state high school soccer team on the boy's side. They had a great tournament, I got to see them play a bunch of times cuz I was watching those, you know, kids from Bettendorf that you're beating up on, you got a kid on that team. But you did an awesome job, um, got to see how, had a little adversity, came back, got a couple of W's and got on a roll. So, coach, congratulations, anything you'd like to say, either one of you?
Um, I know how proud I am of the boys, of getting where they are. Honestly, for us, we, uh, we had never been to the state tournament at all. And so, uh, for us, it was a journey, we didn't know, we, I think we coached, we were like, are we doing it right? Have we turned up too early, have we turned up too late? Uh, actually, maybe that naivety would have helped us, right? We didn't know what was going on and we just kept winning and winning. And then, uh, fortunate enough, me personally, for my, uh, my boy to end up scoring the winner. So it's gonna be a Hollywood movie, so it'll be a bestseller.
I'll grab a few if you want me to play you, I got some facial hair that I can come back. Ladies and gentlemen, state champs in soccer.
Finally, you're always at the front, man.
Don't put your hands in, you just do whatever, do some of that, you go proud and see, you can probably see, that's all. Way to go, champs. It talks about your state title, this goes in the trophy case, okay? Congratulations, you're gonna be taking back a lot of hardware, P B, congratulations, gentlemen. All right, switching out for the baseball team from Pleasant Valley, your twenty twenty-one state champions. Led by Derek Steckling. So we got a little bit of a connection here, Jeff Ryder's boy plays on this team, he's our director of economic development. So we get to hear how they're doing, how Brooks is doing, what, who's pitching the next game, where these guys are playing before it even happens. So we're really pleased that we were able to kinda follow you through the eyes of Jeff Ryder and the, and the family. You guys did an awesome job, congratulations, they're state champs for baseball, twenty twenty-one Pleasant Valley High School.
I think that probably, I don't know if I'll read that, but, um, just wanna thank everybody, uh, Mr. Mayor, having us, having us out here. It's sort of been a whirlwind of a few weeks, I'm sure, for these guys. Um, we're missing quite a few, that's seniors are already off at college, uh, we got guys starting football doing practice. Uh, we have guys doing their fall league baseball stuff already, so it, it really never stops. But, um, just wanna thank our community in general, you know, it's, it's really awesome to see you guys here. Congratulations to you, young guys, um, because it all starts there. There's a love for baseball at a young age in this community that is, um, not like something I've seen before. So continue to have that passion for the game. And, um, I said it last week at our, at our school board meeting, that it truly does take a village when you're all trying to work towards one common goal. Um, and that's exactly what it is, from the Bettendorf community, our school district, um, our administrators, families, and then these guys here. So, um, thank you to all you, continue to love the game of baseball, it's a beautiful game, there's nothing like it because there's no time clock on it. That's one thing we talk about a lot, there's no time clock, you have to find a way to get outs. Uh, so that's one reason that, that we love it, but we talk about it with these guys all the time, that it's one of those things that you have to find a way to get us out, we have to get you out. So, um, thanks for having us, congratulations, guys, and, and thank you.
You guys be seen, how's that?
It's great. Okay, thanks.
Way to go, champs. Good job, guys, congratulations. Last but not least, we have an individual state champion in golf. Come on up, Rivermount Collegian and Bettendorf High School, state golf champion, Shannon Vogler is here. She's coached by Robbie Fern, she's the twenty twenty-one girls' state champion. I don't look at the height, cuz you're the individual champ. And I've known Robbie longer than you've been alive, so you're gonna talk, yeah, it's good for you, come on up here with me. Tell us all about how you won a state title on four days of golf?
Two.
Two days of golf, on what course? Some golf course. In Ames, Iowa.
No, Ankeny.
Ankeny, she'll get it right, doesn't matter, Robbie got her there. Talk to us about coming in those last two holes.
Uh, the last two holes, I mean, I, I knew I was up, um, cuz I was down five shots after the first three holes. Um, so after that, I knew I had to like grind it out, but, um, those last two holes, I was just trying to do my best and I birdied the last hole, so it was kind of a good way to end it.
Sounds like a great way to end it. What's the best advice Coach Fern gave you on the golf course? It doesn't have to be at the state tournament, anytime.
Um, just stay positive and go in there with positive thoughts and be confident with your game.
Fantastic, ladies and gentlemen, another state champion. I disagree with the, uh, what I told her, she was down two strokes going into day two and she's getting ready to tee off and I, I told her, go ruin everybody's dreams today. And she did, and she was down five after three holes and she shot sixty-eight on day two to win a state title. This one, I'll give you a quick, the boys, uh, both said two, you know, high school champs. This is for Shannon Vogler, Rivermount Collegian, Bettendorf High School, twenty twenty-one Iowa Girls High School Athletic Association or Union, Class four A Individual State Champion. Thank you for being here with us, congratulations. Yeah, absolutely, we'll, we'll get some pictures and we'll get this to go back with you, put it on a mantle. Don't put it in Mr. Bossster's office, he's got enough. Uh, yeah, you okay over here, you wanna get in the middle, come on over here.
Let's go.
It truly is an honor to, uh, recognize young people who have already reached great milestones and accomplishments. and accomplishments. Fantastic. Thank you all for being here. We've got three proclamations tonight that I'll deliver from the middle of the room. You're not in school, so I don't have to send you home for homework, you can hang out as long as you'd like to, we'd love to have you. Three proclamations, and we get started with the meat of our meeting. Only 30 minutes to have a little fun today.
Hi, guys.
Go ahead, if this is your cue, if you've got someplace I'm in.
Who do you want to be first?
All right, hey, I mean, it's been nice, appreciate you. Congrats, guys.
See you later.
Yeah, all right, well.
Not surprised.
Oh, you're losing control there, really.
Congratulations, guys.
Awesome folks, congratulations.
Elephant Club, guys, you wanna come up? Please? Well, I'm sweating. We packed it full. Doing great things in the community, just like you all. This is a proclamation for the Office of the Mayor, this is for the Elephant Club. Our Elephant Club members who are present with us this evening are Chris Spencer, Tad Burdette, Dan Van Lanigan, Bob Stone, and Glenn Benj. Whereas, one in every four women will experience domestic violence during her lifetime, and approximately 15.5 million children are exposed to domestic violence every year. And whereas, domestic violence has not confined itself to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and society barriers. It is widespread, and it is devastating to society as a whole, particularly women and children. And whereas, the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas, victims should have help to find compassion, comfort, and healing that they need, to have access to medical and legal services, counseling, transitional housing, and other supportive services so they can escape the cycle of abuse. We encourage domestic abuse violence victims and their families to seek assistance from appropriate victim services, organizations, and the National Domestic Violence Hotline at 1-800-799-SAFE. And whereas, local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and its prevalence, and to eliminating it through prevention and education. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the Mayor of the City of Bettendorf, do hereby proclaim the 18th Day of August as Flowers on the River Day in the Bettendorf community, and I invite everyone to Shreveport Park on August 18th at 5:00 PM to attend the Flowers on the River presentation sponsored by the Elephant Club and Family Resources Engaging Males Program in remembrance of those who have lost their lives to domestic violence. Excuse me. Very serious subject after having a lot of fun with our young people, but the young men in the room would be welcomed by you all and the great work that you do in our community. I'm blessed to have been able to attend these ceremonies in the past, and hope to see you tomorrow at 5:00 at Shreveport Park. And next year in Bettendorf, this rotates between Bettendorf and Rock Island, and our good friend Mayor Toomes is so generous with his time, and we have great folks who attend. I know the Chief is there all the time, I know Captain Paul's been there, you always bring a lot of people, it's very important to us. So, please, tell us a little bit about the Elephant Club, whoever wants to speak, and what you're doing tomorrow night.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much, Your Honor, Members of Council, and Department Eds, and obviously everyone else here, thank you so much for allowing us to come tonight. We are the men of the Elephant Club, and we are just want to be visual members of men standing up against domestic violence. Flowers on a River event is our annual event we do every year, just to bring awareness and a remembrance of the victims of domestic violence. And unfortunately, this is a problem that has continued to affect not only our community, but nationwide. And we just want to be there to show what a man is, and to stand up, because domestic violence is not just a woman's problem, it's a man's problem. And we want to be those men to stand up and be visual members of the community, leaders for the youth, and show them what it means to be a man, and to be supportive of the community. So once again, I thank you to our members, thank you, Your Honor, Council, Department Eds, and thank you so much for us. Once again, tomorrow night, Shreveport Park at 5:00 PM sharp. And then next year, we'll be doing it, and we'll be doing it the Thursday before Father's Day. And if you can, it's a very short program, but I guarantee you, it will move you like none other. It is very effective, and something to see, every flower that is put into the river is called with a name, and that name is a victim that we need to remember, is a victim of domestic violence. Once again, thank you very much.
Get a little closer, come on, you're right there. Yeah, just get a little closer. It is a very movable, moving experience.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you, appreciate the work you do. We'll see you soon. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have Women's Equality.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, this is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor for Women's Equality Day. This is requested by David Stewart of the Quad City National Organization for Women. Present today, we believe, are David Stewart and Lori Jenke. She's not coming? Okay. That's okay, well, you're here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm retired.
Let's do a proclamation. All right, this is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas, women of the United States have united to assure that their rights and privileges are available to all citizens regardless of sex, and whereas, Congress has designated August 26th the anniversary date of the certification of the 19th Amendment as Women's Equality Day, and whereas, women of the United States are to be commended and supported in their organizations and activities. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the Mayor of the City of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim August 26th, 2021, as Women's Equality Day, and encourage all of our citizens to remember and honor the state on which the women of America were first given the right to vote in 1920, and that day in 1970, on which a nationwide demonstration for women's rights took place.
You're here. Here.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, yes.
You betcha. Please, if you have anything to say?
That's it all, thank you for being here.
Get a quick picture.
Great, thank you.
You betcha. Oh, you got your t-shirt on, we better do this.
Thank you.
That's for you?
Oh, thank you, sir. She's great. Give her a raise.
Yeah? Yeah, she is pretty great. She's so great, we got rid of the city administrator, Deckard Point. Water Quality Stewardship Month proclamation, and this was requested by Kelsey Denoyer, volunteer and watershed coordinator at the Nahant Marsh Education Center and partners of Scott County Watershed. Kelsey, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Good. You leaving Steve in the background over there?
I am.
All right. Steve Bosterson, come on up, is there anybody else here that I would recognize for this proclamation?
Thanks, Mr. South.
You're in charge, Kelsey, you get to talk, we hear from him all the time. All right. A proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas, water quality of Scott County's streams, lakes, and rivers directly contributes to human health and well-being of the county's citizens and its ecosystems. And whereas, the water quality of our streams directly contributes to the quality of our drinking, recreation, and fishing waters. And whereas, since 2003, Partners of Scott County Watershed have been at the forefront of monitoring water quality in Scott County, and is one of the organizations organizing, monitoring events in our county. And whereas, the Partners of the Scott County Watershed have engaged thousands of community volunteers to participate in water quality monitoring and educational events. And whereas, the City of Bettendorf recognizes that the Environmental Protection Agency founded National Water Quality Month in 2005 to promote conservation of our natural water resources. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the Mayor of the City of Bettendorf, do hereby proclaim the month of August as Water Quality Stewardship Month, and I encourage all citizens, businesses, community resources, and agencies to join us in being good stewards of Scott County's watersheds.
Here.
Here.
Kelsey?
Yes, thank you. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council and everyone else for being part of this proclamation, and part of our efforts this month. So Partners is dedicated to improving the health of our watersheds throughout the whole county, but our efforts extend beyond that, because watersheds don't just follow the political boundaries, they of course spread throughout our whole world, really, and we're really appreciative that the City of Bettendorf is taking part in our efforts to make a difference this month and every month. So some half-sheet flyers are going around, and they have a list of things that you can do this month, super simple, to make a difference, because even these small actions, they matter, and it's important that we take these small actions and grow them so that we can protect our natural resources for the generations to come. So thank you again for being part of this.
Come stand next to me, we'll get a picture. All right, why don't you hold that, you got it. Thank you, appreciate you, good work. All right, Kelsey, you got one more thing for us.
One more thing. For being part of these efforts, we did want to, because it's part of honorable membership for our organization. You can share it.
Part of it, yeah.
So thank you again, thank you.
We appreciate it, thank you. Maybe the girl with the gold star gets it. Everybody seems to love it.
What can I say?
All right, shall we have a meeting?
Sure, Your Honor.
We have come to public request of council, if there's an item on tonight's agenda not for public hearing, or something that is not on tonight's agenda at all, that you'd like to discuss, we'd like to hear from you. You can be heard by approaching the podium in the back, please state your name and your address, we'd like to hear from you. You can pull that mic, yep, perfect, thank you, dear.
I'm used to doing that. Hello, my name is Kelly Meyer, I live at 2459 Lindenwood Drive in Bettendorf, Iowa. I'm gonna start with a quote, quoting the Census Bureau. Bettendorf's population grew the most by 17.7% over the past 10 years, based on the 2020 census, as was listed in last Saturday's Quad City Times. Outpacing the growth percentages of Davenport, Scott County, and Iowa, Bettendorf's population increased from 33,217 in 2010 to 39,102 people in 2020. Bettendorf is a growing, and I think we can all agree, thriving community, and we're all proud to be members of it. I'm gonna start this with saying, first, we want to say thank you to the Bettendorf Police. I think it's really cool that tonight, I'm gonna talk about the Bettendorf Police Department, and the first thing we got to witness was Sergeant Patrick Measek being, you know, getting that promotion to Sergeant. So congratulations to him, knowing that we do appreciate and support the Bettendorf Police. Quickly, background. What has precipitated our meeting, or joining the meeting tonight, was on Saturday, July 24th, we all know that there's been a lot of challenges with, in all of the cities, with cars being broken, driveways, garages, things like that. On Saturday, July 24th, not only did that happen in our neighborhood, but it started to escalate. For the first time since I can remember, since living in that neighborhood, we had two houses being attempted to be broken. So, that's really scary. Our neighbors obviously called 911, the Bettendorf Police did respond, and we appreciate that. You know, as a community, we're trying to help, we've created our own Neighborhood Watch database, we've got the Ring cameras that we share with things like that. But we know that it's not enough. You know, when we're seeing two houses being broke into, one through an easement window in the basement, and one through a sliding glass three-season room, that's really scary for us. We know that our evening patrol officers have to cover a very large area. As we can see from this quote, we're seeing big growth in that population, we're seeing apartments, we're seeing houses, we're seeing business development. That's great for a community, but we need to see that development amongst our police department as well. If we look at that, that growth out in the northeast area of Bettendorf, how thin can we run our patrol? It takes a long time to get someone up to speed with the Bettendorf Police Department. It takes, right now, let's face it, hiring is a challenge everywhere, so first, we have to get them hired, we've got to get them to the state academy. State academy slots are limited, and that's on their timeframe, not necessarily what's going to be our timeframe, or the city's timeframe. You know, that can cause delays in this process. If you look at the fact that we have four patrol officers in the evening, if a domestic gets called in, you've got two units that have to respond to that. Something happens on the bridge, or there's something on the border with Davenport, or if there's a big event, you know, that leaves the offices, the officers that we have in our community in the middle of the night, when these challenges are happening, very, very thin. So, we would like to see some action taken to support that, we would like to see something happen from a city council standpoint, can there be some action taken to move up a timetable of hiring? Do we look at, is there an opportunity to shift some dollars in the budget? Something that we can work on that now, because we don't want to wait two years for us to get more officers. We're growing, we've grown, we need them now. So, we're trying to help, we know, we see something, say something, we call 911. But, we feel that Bettendorf is a city, is a great community, that we all appreciate, that's thriving, we would like to see Bettendorf step up, get some patrol officers, get some additional support, get some personnel, what can we do to make this community continue to thrive and continue to be safe? Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, nice to see you. Anybody else wish to be heard on public request of council?
Hello, Ronald Weiss, Countryside Lane, Bettendorf, Iowa. Great job, Kelly, you did your homework and brought up everything that needed to be said. I'll shoot a little bit more from the hip. I don't think the elected people up here right now, maybe the other employees, are really doing their job for the City of Bettendorf. You were elected to help and protect and serve Bettendorf, quite frankly, four patrol officers during the day, evening, night, really is kind of a shame. I don't know what, I don't pretend to know what's required by law, by the city, by standards, but realistically, four patrol officers for the size of Bettendorf, for the population, and for the incidents that are going on right now, is really not enough. So I believe you, as the elected officials, need to step up and figure this out. I know the police have a hard time with these incidents, because they say they can't do anything with these kids that they get caught. They're stealing cars, that's a felony. I don't understand why we can't do something when it's a felony. My house was the one that was broke into. I'm not gonna put up with that stuff. So, again, I believe you, as the elected officials for the city, need to figure this out, get some people on the streets, shuffle people around within the department, hire more personnel. more personnel, whatever it might be, but I believe it needs to get done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Obviously, we're all very sorry that yours is one of the houses that was broken into, sir. Anyone else wish to be heard on public request of council?
Gary Tennis, 2493 Countryside Lane. We moved to Bettendorf over almost 40 years ago because it was a wonderful bedroom community. I'm a little nervous in my bedroom when I have people across the street from me, houses being attacked and trying to be broken into, and right down the street, somebody trying to climb through a bedroom window where somebody's daughter is sleeping. So it is very concerning to me. I have a couple questions. We point, Kelly pointed out about the growth. How many officers have grown in the City of Bettendorf in the most 40 years that we've been here? I don't know, but I have a feeling it's probably not enough with the population expanding. We just talked about 10 years, and I'm talking 40. The other thing is, as Ron brought up, we have a couple of police officers that live in our neighborhood, and you'd kind of think that you'd feel safer that way, but it doesn't seem to be the case. They expressed a little bit of frustration about if they do get to arrest these young people, that there's nothing they do about them. They call their parents, and off they go. I just wonder what the process is for when these people do get taken in by the police. What are, what are our options? I mean, is it something that we need to have a little bit more strength in our district attorney or whoever processes that and charges these, you know, young people to do it? How do we prevent it from continuing on? Like I say, moved to Bettendorf because it's a nice bedroom community, and I don't feel safe in my bedroom anymore. So I'm looking forward to you folks to help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tennis. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else wish to be heard on public request of council?
Name is Alex Latus, 2515 Countryside Lane.
Alex, I'm sorry, could I, could you tell me your last name again? I want to call you by the right name.
Latus?
Latus?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Also on the street with the recent break-ins, and I agree with my neighbors that, given the growth of Bettendorf, we should also make sure that the police force has an equal presence to be able to keep the neighborhood safe. I also want to say that to encourage to also take a holistic approach and a community-based approach to the problem as well. Speaking to the issue of prevention, we, earlier in the meeting, we talked about that watersheds don't have, you know, political boundaries, but also neighborhoods also cross political boundaries, and I hope that the city, the police department, also reaches out to these communities where these kids are coming from, because it does weigh on me how young these kids are that are committing these terrible crimes. But 14 years old, some of them as young as 12 and 10, and it is a really dangerous situation, and people can get hurt, and even these kids can get hurt doing these dumb things. So I hope you reach out to those communities and take a holistic, community-based approach to solving the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Latus. Anybody else wish to be heard on public request of council? All right, seen no movement, we'll close public request of council. Let's move to our ordinance. There's a second reading for Councilmember Webster, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a second reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Municipal Code Title 12, Entitled Subdivision Regulations, and Title 7, Entitled Public Works, or Public Ways of Property. I move approval of the ordinance at its second reading.
Second. Any discussion here? Obviously, we took this up at Committee of the Hall. We had a first reading that unanimously passed. Seeing none, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
All right, second reading unanimously passed. Our next meeting will be the third and final reading for our subdivision regulation modifications. Let's move to the resolution for tonight. Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving a 6% increase in base salary effective July 3, 2021 for the city attorney. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion here? We met in closed session last night, clearly. Okay, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Before we hit our consent agenda, I want to introduce to you Rocky Vermillion. Rocky, if you would please stand. This is Rocky. She's agreed to volunteer and serve on our Board of Adjustment. She's item F tonight, so thank you, Rocky. All right, consent agenda. I'd like to approve, have a motion to approve the same at this time.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Keeping in mind, we also, for those in the audience, talked about this last night at Committee of the Hall, and we're able to ask any questions over that meeting that we wanted. Anything here? Any thoughts, concerns, discussion? Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
We have unanimously passed each and every item on tonight's consent agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved. Second.
We stand adjourned. Good work, people. Thank you.